Everybody please do you want us moving our flag?
I pull the levers to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where nation under God, individual with liberty, justice for all.
Good evening, um, welcome to the, uh, April ninth, uh, Board of執政 regular, regular, uh, business meeting.
It's the twenty-sixth.
Is it not twenty-third or is it twenty-third?
Twenty-third. I guess we do it.
I stand corrected.
I was just the dean right there.
I stand corrected.
You need to edit the tape.
That's it.
And I stand corrected as well.
No, it's taped right on here, this is a public meeting.
There's no going back.
Consent agenda.
Move acceptance of the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting consent agenda as presented? And all those opposed, that stands passed. Uh, warrant circulating around. Yeah, we're working on that now. The next regularly scheduled meeting, business meeting, is, um, May fourteenth, five thirty right here. We have a, a, uh, meeting scheduled for next week, the thirtieth. And if not anything else, that's just to get the warrant going, right?
Correct, the meeting on the thirtieth is just to take care of the town meeting warrant and potentially a couple miscellaneous.
The confusing comes up prior to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Citizens comments, select, selectmen's comments, Adam. Do you want to, you, I know you have some stuff, you wanna wait for other? Or you wanna go now, or?
I just thought I'd throw a few things at you before we get into the business items, so whenever you'd like me to do that.
Okay, well, all right, why don't we wait a few minutes, go write the citizens comments. Any citizens comments? Hearing none. Uh, any committee or department work group reports, um, budget committee, um, were here to, uh, accept and perhaps vote on the budget tonight, um, so, uh, that'll be coming up in the regular business part of the meeting. Uh, investment committee recommendation. I'll turn the floor over to.
Okay, we had in our plan, um, we have one of our CDs matured, so that's where we met. And it's a hundred thousand, and it was, uh, Berkshire Bank of Pittsfield, Mass. CD matured as at one point two-five for twelve months. And to stay in plan, you need to go fifteen months, so we have three, um, choices. Our first choice is Sanford Institution for Savings, means we have a main bank in there, we've done one in the past with Bangor Trust. So it's fifteen months and two point one, just note, um, the length has broadened up a little bit more, it's been the federal bank has upgraded, so the CD rates are creeping up a little bit. Our second and third choice is the same bank, it's Unqua Bank of Roseburg, which is, it's holding companies, the twentieth largest bank in the United States based in Florida. So its rates that we're looking at are slightly higher, we thought there was more strength with the main bank. So it's our recommendations, we go.
Just a comment for clarity, that our first choice is what we want to invest the hundred thousand in. If, for some reason when you, if you approve that, uh, for some reason tomorrow, when Adam calls the, the manager of the finances that will do the actual purchase, if it has, we are looking at Friday's list. If for some reason on Tuesday that is no longer available to purchase, then that's where the second choice comes in. And likewise, where the third choice could come in. That's the purpose of having a second and third choice on the list.
Sure. Um, you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Um, I move acceptance of the investment committee's recommendation and that Adam Garland, town administrator, be authorized to make purchases. Can I second the motion?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of, um, accepting and acting upon the West Bath Investment Committee's recommendation? And all those opposed? That's passed.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, for all the work you put into this. Okay, uh, I'm going to. All right, um, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, uh.
So this be a other?
Yeah. Other's gonna, other's now number two, and the budget's number three.
All right, so the first, um, first item is, I received another letter from Frances Crimmens. This is that, uh, foreclosed property we discussed the other week. Let me give you the printout on, she's actually sent another brief letter as well as a three hundred dollar check towards the back taxes on this property that the town has foreclosed on. The reason that I'm bringing this to you folks is, um, we haven't accepted any money on this property for many years. Before we accept the check or cash the check, I wanted to receive some input from the board on, do you wanna allow her to start making payments? Or would you like me to send the payment back? Would you like some time to think about it? Either way, um, but, oops, this is the letter that we just received today. I apologize, I only have one copy of that. She basically is saying, having not heard a response or a decision from the selectmen, she wanted to start making payments. I've explained to her that payments or no payments.
How long has the, has the town owned the property to foreclosure?
If I'm recalling correctly, since twenty twelve.
Speaking for just me, uh, there are three, three foreclosure, um, issues that we need to address. They stacked up, uh, one at a time, and, um, a couple of meetings ago, we decided to just table them until we get past town meeting, because personally, I feel that each, neither one of these three foreclosures are cut and dry, they're each unique in their own circumstances, and I feel each and every one of them deserves the attention that, uh, our full attention. And, uh, we agreed to kick them forward, and I, I think we should, um, support that previous decision, and I would say either hold the check, don't cash it, or send it back.
We can only hold a check ten days from receipt, so that's one of the reasons I'm bringing it up tonight. So we have to cash it within ten days, or I have to return it to her. That's state law that puts us in that position, so.
And does sending the check back send any sort of a message?
I think that, I mean, we, the board could, uh, direct me to send the check back with a letter that says, you know, the board will be revisiting the foreclosed properties in the beginning of, what did we say, June, or, yeah, June? And, um, you know, to discuss what further action or something to that effect.
Does anybody have their own, a different opinion? What would she do?
I might, but I haven't had really time to think about it. Have we, have you had a chance to talk to Sally about this?
I have not.
This is a highly unusual situation.
I'm happy to call and talk to her tomorrow and get further direction for.
Or sometime between now and the first meeting in June, but I, I think we hopefully should return the check.
Well, if we only have ten days, we have to do something with the check, and I don't think we should cash it.
Well, and that's the biggest thing tonight, that's all I'm looking for, is do you want to cash the check or not? If you cash the check, are you setting the precedence that you're allowing payments to be made?
Yeah, yes.
And whereas the board hasn't made a decision yet, I think that, from my perspective, the best thing to do would be return the check with a letter that advises her that.
Right.
The board will be visiting this issue in June, and then you'll give her some direction.
And I think further, I guess, might be relevant, but her attempted payment, um, should be considered not relevant to the foreclosure issue before us when we, uh.
Take it up.
We have a member of the public who wishes to speak.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know if you even had a chance, or if this is the first time you're seeing it. Does the board have any intention of giving this property back? Because I think it would be in your best interest if you're not to send the check back and say.
We haven't, we haven't discussed that. Giving the property back is still a possibility, yeah. Uh, we can really not discuss it, that's why we kicked it out till after, after, uh, town meeting.
What is the tax balance?
I don't have that information in front of me, it's in, it's about six thousand, I think, or some, or somewhere in that realm.
But it hasn't been accruing tax, that's the question.
Right, right.
Town hold it.
Six years.
So the reason that, this, the reason this set, or came up today so abruptly is because just today we received the check. So that's why I was looking for some direction.
And I didn't realize that we had decided to put that off till June.
Yeah, there are three of them before us that came up, uh, so, over a period of about a month.
Mm-hmm, and it's all three of them.
They all kinda stacked up that one meeting.
Just didn't realize that we had decided that.
Yeah, uh, we did. We decided we didn't wanna act that particular day.
Right.
That we wanted to wait till after town meeting. So.
I, I think, I think we need to return the check.
With a note that says we'll be taking this up in a month.
I think we need to be clear, not just a month, I think, and that way it's very, very clear.
Right, and we won't be discussing it.
At the bottom of the line, if you don't get a check in full, you own the property. A three hundred dollar payment, it doesn't, I'm quite certain in main tax law that partial payments do not constitute, it's not like they can't send you a collection if you made a five dollar payment. So if she could send a check for three hundred dollars, she could send you a check for a thousand dollars, it doesn't mean anything.
I know.
But I also just think that, you know.
The other part is the human factor, I mean, knowing that this woman is on a fixed income and so forth, so.
I'm on a fixed income. You're on a fixed income. Sorry, just throwing it out there.
Knowing she's on a fixed income and accepting her money with no intention of allowing her to purchase the property is, I guess, where my head was at, right, wrong, or anything.
Yeah, the likelihood of her purchasing back the property aren't very good. Not to say it's impossible, but I don't see it.
So just to clarify, the town's owned this property since two thousand twelve?
Apparently, yeah.
And so she didn't pay taxes for three years before that property?
Apparently not.
Yes.
So it's like a nine to ten years with no.
And you just got your first red check for three hundred bucks?
What are the other, two other properties, the other?
I don't know, we don't have it before us tonight. And we haven't discussed it, it's, you know, it's parked somewhere.
So, I, I really think we need to return the check. Give her the information that we're, we are going to be discussing foreclosed properties on.
That first meeting after town meeting.
Will be June eleventh.
June eleventh.
And I don't think that it will be anything, in the interest of honesty, I, I think she should be informed that the likelihood of it being returned at this point is not high.
That's a subjective statement, though.
Well, that is true, that is subjective.
I mean, if she slapped down, say she owed six thousand dollars, she slapped down somehow a six thousand dollar check, what's the chances that we wouldn't give it back to her?
I, after this, after this many years, I just don't see it, and you, they don't be giving the message to other taxpayers, and that's okay, and if you don't wanna pay your taxes for ten years, you don't have to either.
Yeah.
And it's not a primary residence.
I don't think primary residence has a lot to do with it.
It has everything, it has everything to do with it, like putting someone out on the street feeder.
I don't think so, this is, this isn't on the agenda for discussion tonight. What's on the agenda for discussion tonight is this letter and this check. It's not somebody's residency, you know.
Well, I feel the same way, if you cash the check, it's almost saying you're accepting the monument.
Yeah, there's a down payment.
And we, we have to do something with this check within ten days apparently, right?
Yes.
So let's send it back with a, a note that says we'll be taking it up on the, uh, June eleventh, and that's it.
Okay.
Because that's the fact.
All right.
That's the consensus.
And it's very clear, and it's June eleventh, and she can be here if she wants to be.
All right, send that, give me my direction if you don't mind, please. I didn't mean to open up a hornet's nest here, I. All right, so.
Now what, Adam?
Yes. All right. So, that's, now I am gonna start trouble, so.
Can I, can I just, before you start trouble, can I just add a little more trouble to the last trouble?
Last trouble.
On the eleventh, since we're going to be discussing this property, can we also discuss the other things that the town owns?
I thought that was the intention, yes.
The other one was three.
Yeah, not, not just, well, are there other things?
There's, uh, one, to my knowledge, there's one other significant property. Um, one of the items that's in our stack, one of the three, is the other significant property that I'm aware of. And all the rest of what's in town is just stuff that we probably couldn't even give away. But the eleventh would be a good time to start discussion about town-owned property, because we haven't addressed that in a couple of years.
I think to Madeline's point, maybe that would be the nice thing to do, is we'll have a list of all currently town foreclosed properties, and the board maybe could touch on every single one of them and give the administrator direction on how to move forward.
Yeah, we know what they are, we, Adam and I went over them pretty thoroughly a couple of years, and nothing really has changed. Well, some, well, no, some things.
Yeah, some things, yeah, they, I came on the board.
We sold some stuff and.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's just review them.
Yeah, actually, that could be, uh, that could be our large project for the, for the.
Look at the investment company, they're just rubbing their hands.
Okay. That wasn't so big trouble, actually. Now, back to Adam.
All right, so, since we last talked about the Savino Road, the Savino Swamp. Yes, I'm looking at you. Mr. Hennessy brought up a few ideas on maybe how to try and save a little bit of money and so forth, instead of doing the box culvert that was presented by the engineer, uh, replacing it as an emergency measure or with what's already there. Communicated with the Army Corps of Engineers about that idea, they responded in email, I forwarded some of this information to you guys. It looks like you also reached out to Joyce McCray, the state local representative. She has also reached out on, uh, to the Army Corps of Engineers and responded. So what I wanted to do was provide the board with a copy of the emails from the Joyce McCray, as well as my email correspondence with the Army Corps of Engineers on this topic. The general consensus that I'm sensing is that, um, the Army Corps feels that we need permitting in order to do this, and we need to do the box culvert direction because of, it's a stream crossing and so forth. Is that generally what you feel as well, David?
Unfortunately, yes.
So, I guess where, where I'm at at this point is, uh, wanted to provide this further information to show, we did look into some other options, uh, albeit David's request, um, but at this point, unless I'm getting further direction from the board, I feel like, uh, we're reverting back to the direction you guys gave the administrator in the last meeting when we discussed this issue.
That was to pursue permitting, right?
Right, so currently he's, the engineer's looking at permitting, and he'll keep me in, in the loop on where that stands.
Okay. Great, thank you, Adam.
Just to give you information too, uh, the culvert itself is a forty-eight inch culvert.
Yeah.
Then it has a sleeve to thirty-six, because it's extended wide, so the original culvert was forty-eight.
Yeah.
And the Army Corps says that is not even big enough.
Probably forty-eight's not big enough.
No, forty-eight's not big enough. But, and the whole problem is, the water goes south and off there, it doesn't drain out. When it goes past the road, it doesn't drain out fast enough.
Yeah.
So the culvert size, in a lot of ways, is not the view, is not the problem. There's no outlet.
Right. I wonder, actually getting the stream to flow as nature intended might help with, long-term with the sinking road issue?
Sounds like a question for the engineer.
There's no bottom there to begin with, when the, when the road goes, there's no bottom for how to keep it, so.
I'm sure there's an optimistic hope.
So what's in the Army Corps?
This is called a specific.
Well, we've gotta deal with, we've gotta deal with the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers, because that public work found a return where we can save the plan. And we've got an engineer who's licensed and qualified, and his recommendation is, uh, you know, what he, what he presented, and, uh. There's not a lot of.
But if it doesn't drain, what good is it to?
I'm not an engineer, I can't ask that.
Well, somebody needs to ask that question.
What was that question?
What I'm generally described by your brother is that the problem is not the size of the culvert. The problem is that when the water goes from this side of the road to that side of the road, it has no further way to go, so it sits there. Is that right, David?
That's part of the problem, yes.
Because the outlet for the water that's coming through the culvert is blocked or doesn't exist. So a very expensive box culvert's not gonna solve that problem. It's gonna still sit there.
Well, the engineer's other end of the plan is to raise that road by three feet, put on shoulders.
Just to raise it?
Yeah, well, raise the box culvert's gonna be a foot and a half higher than the road currently is.
So the rest of the road has to be higher than that?
Yeah. And if the culvert, this box culvert happens to sink five years, eight years from now, that's our problem.
How would the box culvert supposed to be underpinned?
It'll float, I think it's a total, it's a floating.
Well, well, I didn't, I didn't bring this up to cause mass hysteria this evening, I only brought it up so I wanted to keep you guys in the loop, that's all.
We're in the loop already, thank you.
Other than the Army Corps of Engineers, is there any other agency that would have a second opinion?
Well, I'm told Army Corps, well, it rules on this, the other ones are there, but they don't.
So what, no matter, pretty much what they say is what we have?
We came by the Army Corps, they're in charge.
Well, they're the ones that give.
Well, um, in order to qualify for that grant, we have to.
No, no, this, uh, the Army Corps has nothing to do with the grant funding per se. The Army Corps of Engineers has to do with.
Permits.
Replacing the culvert and the permits associated with that. Whether we have grant funding or not, the Army Corps has to bless what we're doing, or else we can't do it.
Paul.
So, basically, from what I understand, from what you just said, if you choose to not go with their recommendation, they're gonna choose to not give you the permits, or will they permit you to do?
In, in short, the theory, and correct me if I'm wrong, in short, the theory is that if we, if the town went over there and replaced what's currently there with the same thing, a forty-eight inch culvert, the Army Corps of Engineers could come in behind us and say that's not sufficient, and force us to put in this box culvert that's been engineered.
They end up finding us, probably.
Like they did in town, right?
I mean, you really don't have a choice.
No.
Either leave it be and let it be what it is, or.
Or a bigger box culvert, or a slightly different design that they had, it's still gonna have a cross substantial area, this is like a five hundred year event, what they're putting in there. Please don't mind us.
And again, I, I'm not an engineer to know how to design problems, except that, what I do know is in the forestry world, where I worked, uh, for most of my career, the, the, when, when the government passed the, the regulations that talked about the known net loss of wetlands, and the government suddenly had a, a, a big say on, on wetland management in the country, even little streams became the purview of when you did a road crossing. The Army Corps of Engineers had to provide a permit.
That's right, that's right, just like Vernal Pool, you know?
And, and, you know, there, there's a bunch of rules, that's a bureaucracy, and.
Well.
I'm just troubled by the fact that.
And we, we the people created the monster and turned it loose, and now it, you know, comes back to bite us, and we don't like it. That's what's happening.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm troubled by the fact that you could spend a lot of money on a culvert that really might not drain that swamp in any way, or, or improve the, the.
Federal government doesn't care too much about the course.
Well, well, not, not to interject. Not to interject, it's not about spending money on a culvert that doesn't need to be fixed, the culvert needs to be fixed, because it's failing.
I understand, I understand.
And it's a, it's a two-part problem, from what the engineer has described, and I thought the board, I feel the board's on the same page. It's a two-part problem, we have a failing culvert that is adding to the flooding issue. The second part is that the road is so low that that also was, you know, it's, it's flooding because the water tables are too high over there, if you will, in the swamp. So if we have a larger culvert, which is being paid for by a DEP grant that we received, and then the town will have to use its own money to pay to raise the road. And combine, you know, combining those two projects together will supposedly allow this not to flood over, so.
And doesn't the money sort of work out, uh, the grant will pretty much take care of the culvert, and the town's portion of, of the, uh, engineering price tag of a project will pretty much take care of raising the road? Isn't that sort of how it works out?
If you look at the numbers, the, the grant is for about ninety-five thousand dollars, which is probably just under half of what this whole project is going to cost, from what the, what the engineer has presented. The thought process is also that the project is going to cost more than that, because some of the engineer's numbers seem a little bit low.
Really?
Yeah. From the information that I have received elsewhere. But again, that's the, right, so.
Right now, our choice is to go with the Army Corps', the engineer's design. We have to, because the culvert's gonna collapse, it's rotting out.
Yeah. So, yeah, I do not mean for this to become a large topic of conversation, I don't want it to present.
It, it hasn't been a large topic of conversation for the last two months. Not at all.
I have one other item for you, and then I'll intercept my mouth.
You dare.
All right, so this one is the copy of the draft town meeting warrant. If the board would be kind enough to review, provide individual feedback, um, and I'll have the final copy for you on Monday, the thirtieth, at the special selectmen's meeting. The attorney has reviewed what you see, see there, and has given it, uh, her blessing, if you will. The highlighted areas are areas where I need to fill in budget numbers. Um, once the budget is approved by the selectmen, or adopted, excuse me, then there's also a couple of highlights, and this is more reminders from myself. Warrant article for public works. Warrant article for public works eighteen and nineteen, there's some language in there regarding public hearings. If the board would be kind enough to take a look at that and see if they feel that that language should be there or not, um the attorney has advised me that that language is not necessarily required, your preference, so if you would just be kind enough to take a look at that and provide me some feedback, that would be great.
Yeah.
I will now shut my mouth.
And that, that's the only thing we really need to work out?
Well, if you'd be, you know, if you could prove the rest of the.
No, I mean, that's the only thing we really want to draw our attention to, I guess.
Well, there's a couple other small pieces, if you'd like to get into the warrant a little further, I'm glad to, Peter.
Finding the right combination of words here.
Yeah, no, I've, I've talked to each board member individually on the phone or in person, so I wasn't going into as much detail, but I'm glad to run through the entire warrant if you'd like.
No, we'll do that, uh if need be, on the thirtieth.
Okay.
Next week, when we take after we've had a chance to look this over.
In general, the warrant is pretty darned close to what it's looked like every year for the last couple of years, with some housekeeping items taken care of.
As long as the library is a standalone thing, I'll be happy to do this. Good, thank you, Adam.
Absolutely.
I've got one item, um, we got, um we got an application to the Board of Assessment Review, which uh they are the board that, that when a tax abatement is brought to us and we deny it, deny Ronnie's, uh tax assessing agent's recommendation, and we uphold the denial, uh the applicant has the right to appeal to our Board of Assessment Review, which is a local court, which takes the place of the county board, which we, something we did several years ago. Anyway, they do have a right to appeal. And uh, we got an appeal from the Cornelia Peak property that Matt and whatnot, I don't have. I was approached by the chairman of the Assessment Review Board, and they're a judicial board. A little bit different than the other boards around that we have. That uh the board needs an attorney. At, at this particular point in time, just the board needs an attorney. There are three parties to the issue, it's the town, and it's the applicant, and the Board of Assessment Review. At this particular point in time, the only party which needs an attorney is the Board of Assessment Review, because they're going to have the hearing, and they're going to be looking at fairness, they're going to be looking at procedure, process, that sort of fraud. And then, if the board upholds the denial, the applicant has the uh opportunity, but not the requirement, to appeal to Superior Court, at which point, um, the town will need an attorney, and the uh
Applicant?
The applicant will have an attorney.
And the board.
And the boards, no, the board's out of it at that point. Yeah, the town will need an attorney.
Correct.
Yeah. So, um why is it, why am I talking? The chairman of the Assessment Board gave two attorneys' names that she would be comfortable with, representing the board. Uh, we, however, the town, has a contract with Jensen Bear and Sally Daggett, who's probably the go-to person on assessing. And, so we need to decide whether we choose one of uh one of the two choices from the chairman of the the uh Review Board, or we go with our contracted attorney, Sally Daggett. And we suggest, at this point, we go with our contracted town attorney, um, because if in the event, if not anything else, if in the event that this goes on to Superior Court and she can continue to represent the town, that there won't be any conflict of interest, whereas if somebody else represents us, now, they're may and they're may not, we don't know what circumstances may be. She may not be able to represent us in any state. So, that's my question to you guys.
It would seem to me that it would just make sense to use our regularly scheduled attorney.
Yeah. No, no, the uh, the only reason I threw this out here is because uh the chairman gave me two choices in case we didn't, in case we wanted to do something else, that people that she knew and she'd be familiar with.
Do you know why they have a attorney at this level, at this hearing?
Is to make sure that uh, the uh, you ever been to Assessment Review?
We haven't had attorneys before, have we?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they, the board.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, and it's just to make sure the process is followed, all the, everything's flushed out, needs to be flushed out.
Because the, you versus the. Do you think the board need, use the same attorney, or you have to have different?
At this particular, at this stage, well, if everybody armed up with attorneys, there'd be three attorneys involved.
That's what.
But at this particular stage, we only need one, because the process hasn't happened. The evil deed, if there's going to be an evil deed done, hasn't been done yet.
No, you, you haven't decided differently than the Review Board.
Yeah.
Which is, that happens, then you have to have two different.
The process is being appealed, hasn't been reviewed, and that's what the board's doing, to make sure it's been done fairly and thoroughly and that there was no fraud involved. And uh, that's why there's, nobody else is uh, what's under the microscope right now is the process, the, the denial process. That's why we only need one attorney at this point.
In short, if I may.
Go ahead, Adam.
To clarify, the town's municipal attorney, that law firm can represent the Board of Assessment Review. And then if we do go to Superior Court, the municipal attorney then can represent us at Superior Court, and there aren't any conflicts of interest.
Right.
It is also felt, our municipal attorney, when we spoke to her, that she feels that the assessing agent does, uh, does not need representation at this particular level of where we're at.
Yeah. And um, Adam and I spoke with Sally this afternoon. I, I'm glad we did, I was a little unclear on how we were supposed to set it up. It's been several years since I was involved in one, but we, um, she got us on the straight and narrow. And left the choice up to us, whether we wanted to go with her, who is the contracted town attorney, or these other two, and uh, I would say we go with the town attorney.
Me too.
So, we need to vote on it, or just assess us on it?
She's, she's our attorney.
Yeah. Okay. And Adam, will you give Sally a call back tomorrow, like we
I can do that.
promised her we would do. Good. That's all I've got, um. All we have left is the budget, Budget Committee. Um, we have here.
Anything for yourself?
Yes, to my knowledge, to my knowledge, the Budget Committee and the Board of Selectmen are in agreement on every item. In the proposed budget, there, that's why I can't find it. Every item in the proposed budget, with the exception of a legal line item, which is twenty thousand versus fifteen thousand, yeah. Correct, David?
Yes.
Um, excuse me, you know what? You just wrote in the cover sheet?
Yeah.
Do you want a whole one, or a cover sheet?
Yes.
Again, speaking for my
Send you here.
We, some, some members of the Board of Selectmen would like to invite some members of the Project Committee to come down and join, if they so choose.
Because you're a weak heart, David.
Wants to lose my voice.
We can hear you.
Believe me, you don't have to speak that way, you can hear you.
Peter, if you would like, I could give you just a quick rundown of the, uh, the votes we took.
Okay, that would be great.
We did vote to recommend the school board proposed budget at, at, at their last presentation. We did vote to decrease the fight-out's cap request from twenty thousand to five thousand to add to the capital account. I did speak to the chief about that, and explain that I believe I'll leave around forty-five thousand in there for emergency repairs to trucks, equipment, whatever. And we have other monies we could fall back on, or more revenue, if something really strange happened. And he agreed that would be enough to do that. We also agreed to give him another fifty hundred dollars into his truck maintenance account, due to the age of the pumpers, essentially, which he is now in the process of doing specs on. And proposed us to bring those specs before next year, not this coming year, town meeting, or maybe town meeting. We agreed to recommend town staff, town office staff, include everybody from office upstairs, fire department, protection, the firemen, the offices, codes enforcement, everybody, a three percent raise across the board. We wanted to add twenty-five hundred dollars to the town's emergency building fund, and that should get us close to ten thousand in that, and hope to add another twenty-five or so next year to get it back to fifteen thousand for emergency building fund. And you referenced the legal account. We were told, and shown last week, that the town has spent around a little less than five thousand dollars in a current legal year. And so we did recommend invoke unanimously to cut it from twenty thousand this year to fifteen thousand. At this point, that's almost a ten thousand dollar leeway of what we spent. We thought that was sufficient. If need be, the town can overrun that account. And other funds available, the town will report. The Selectmen's Fund, a ten thousand dollar overrun fund, a ten percent overrun of certain accounts, negative debt, to take care of any legal costs. And we also thought that in a major legal goings-on, would take months before it came to a, a large expense, and that would probably pass a time at another town meeting to fund more if needed. Currently, uh, the town has no real ongoing legal accounts, issues right now. Can change in time, but we still have ten thousand dollars left.
Yeah.
Well, in this case, fifteen thousand dollars left this year. So that's why we recommend the cut from twenty to fifteen.
We, uh, the only item we seem to be a part on is that legal line item, I believe. And five thousand dollar difference, I mean, it's uh Budget Committee, we put a lot of work into the budget, and Adam put a lot of work into the budget. The twenty thousand is just Adam, Adam's recommendation. I upheld, and I know we upheld. Five thousand itself is a figure that, in the bigger picture, rather insignificant when compared to the big picture, so if that's the only item that's preventing the Budget Committee and the Board of Selectmen from being unanimously recommending both the school and municipal budget to the town meeting, then I would ask that the Selectmen consider going, amending to the fifteen thousand, proposing to the fifteen thousand, I mean, not amending. And uh, either that one or Kathleen, if you'd like.
I definitely prefer that we be in agreement between the Advisory Committee and, and the board. And we're sure that should something untoward happen, we would be able to come with peace through the budget year?
In theory.
In theory.
I mean, you can legally overspend the legal account if you need to, it's one of the few that you can. If that answers your question.
The fact of the matter is, the historic, historical, when, when we do need to raise more money, we we can act very nimbly and quickly to do so. And we've demonstrated, year upon year upon year, extremely responsible fiscal men need the budget. Usually, if we go as public, say, we need, because of, we usually get it, so it's to, to not be together uh in, in unison over five thousand dollars, is any worth it?
It's not worth it, but my thought process was to want to cut five thousand dollars from that now, and we've done a lot of cutting, you guys have done an excellent job. Are we setting ourselves up for the next budget? For a couple of disasters, and have to add more and more and more? I mean, five thousand dollars, you say it's not much, but next year we have to add five to this, ten to that, twenty to that, then it gets to be, did we really cut so close that?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't cut just for the sake of cutting, we've uh
We attempted.
That's not what the Budget Committee does, per se. In years past, we recommended more money for some accounts. But in this case, just based on the fact that it's five thousand dollars that we don't believe we need to raise this year, based on our track record of the last twenty years of legal accounts, since we have rid of a couple of big law expenses.
I just see this land thing being an issue, and I think there's going to be a couple way behind it.
Yeah, well, we have fifteen thousand to do that. And if it gets bigger than that, is twenty thousand enough?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, then we're asking for more and more and more on the other end.
But it's better to ask it when you need it, than just ask it just in case, because there's always a just in case. There can be just in case in the roads, a road could wash out, anything. A fight-out truck could break down, there's, there's always just in case, that could happen. So you, you cut and balance the budget as best you can, uh, based on history and what's going on in town right now. And the fact is, if we, we can increase that account this year, we have to legally, without having a town meeting or anything else, it can be overdrafted.
See, we're kind of easing ourselves out of a rather large legal budget that mostly because of the school, you know, it was an astronomical budget, we've been easing out and easing out and I, I guess I agree with the Budget Committee, that we didn't spend anywhere near fifteen thousand this, this year.
Before last year.
Before last year.
Which means it's, we're working our way to that prime town, which scares me.
Except for the average you want with lawsuit money, and the concrete issues, we've never had bigger legal accounts, we just never have.
Well, the last time we, well, not the last time we cut the legal budget, but back about five or six years ago, the Budget Committee asked that the legal budget be cut significantly. And according to the town spending, it was justified to cut it significantly. And I'll be damned if we didn't no more get past town meeting, and the school blew up on us. And we had to go before the public twice that year, they asked for like forty thousand each time, the public said, just go for it. And that's what we're winding down now. So I, I asked, again, the Board of Selectmen to consider cutting five of the legal line to go fifteen from twenty.
I think I would be okay with that, knowing that we, if, if we were in an emergency situation, we could overspend and then find other, other sources without, again, breaking the budget. It's, it's, we don't wanna assess people who are, send tax bills for money that's not needed.
Even whether you spend it or not, it's, still, you gotta raise it and.
Right. I will, I will let the Budget be fine, this one will last.
Neither.
I, I, I would be delighted to do that, too.
All those in favor of cutting the, um.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
No, we don't.
Oh, okay, well, would anybody like to make a motion to lower the line item for legal?
Or follow the Budget Advisory Committee's recommendations? I move we accept the Budget Advisory Committee's recommendation as presented this evening. I'll second that motion.
All votes, any discussion, all those in favor, all those opposed. The legal line item reduced to fifteen thousand.
End of prayer. End of prayer.
Would you guys like a quick overview of the final numbers for the public that might be?
Yes.
Alright, so with the five thousand dollar reduction in the legal line, this year, the proposed, proposed town budget, this includes the raises that were just discussed, the cuts to the capital accounts and so forth. The town's total budget will be one million eighty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. That's thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars more than last year. The school, the school is going, is a proposed three million one hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. That's the local appropriation, that is forty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars more than last year. The school, excuse me, the county budget is six hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars. That is an increase of eight thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars over last year. The total town budget to be raised is gonna be four million eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's a total of ninety-four thousand seven hundred and six dollars more than last year. So in total, that's a, just a tweak over a two percent increase. So, in total, I, just from my perspective and working with the board and the Budget Advisory Committee and looking at the budget, I feel this is a very responsible and very conservative budget, there's not, there isn't any waste in there. I feel that a lot of thought went into every piece of this budget, so I feel very comfortable with those numbers.
Yes, we do. And this, this is not a hot and fast number yet, as we still need to go to revenues, making in the year, new evaluation and other factors, so this is not a done deal yet, that number's not filed, but we should be awful close.
Well, the expenses are final, it's, the expenses are final, it's just we, yeah, we don't know the valuation numbers yet and so forth, so.
Yeah, the revenue side is still.
Still out there.
Thank you, state of mind, yeah, mostly. We won't, we won't, it won't be nailed home until commitment, for sure. That's, that's when the final number comes in, that's in September sometime.
So what the board has in front of them is a copy of this cover sheet that I just was reading from, as well as an entire fresh printout of the budget. The only thing that is not in there is that five thousand dollar reduction for the legal, legal line. So what I was hoping for tonight is if the board could have a vote to adopt the budget as presented, then I can put it on the warrant, and then. We can.
I think we can consider that. Mark, did you have, did you have your, no? Okay, seeing things. Okay. Would, would you like to adopt this budget tonight? Would take it into consideration the five thousand dollar change from what's above and beyond what's presented before us?
So, Adam, the, this second one is printout, the proposed budget plus five thousand dollars, this section right here?
Yep, yeah, these will be the current numbers with the reduction in the legal, correct.
And that's just what we voted to accept from the Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
Alright, so we need a, a motion to put this, to use these figures for the warrant?
Motion to adopt the budget as amended.
As amended, I move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the, the proposed budget as amended. I second that motion.
Any discussion, any general discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting this budget as amended, all those opposed. We got a budget, guys. Good job.
Dancing in the streets.
Good job, everybody. Some years, just like pulling teeth, this year it just seemed like it was easier.
I would have to say, I did not even observe a few of the Budget Advisory Committee meetings. Folks worked very hard and considered things very carefully. It was a good working committee. Thank you.
We're fortunate to have people who work that hard and put that much effort, care into it.
It's a lot of work.
It is.
Something that I wasn't aware of until I got to be a selectman. It's, it's amazing how much thought and consideration and how careful everybody who is, who comes in to present budget items. That's nice, really good.
Thank you very much. Okay, we don't have any, executive session, right?
No, sir.
And we don't have anything else either.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. So are you ready to hear a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, if you want.
I'm willing to adjourn.
I can't find my, my little letters. We are adjourned at six twenty.